Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Due to the public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to Governor Cuomo's executive orders, including Executive Order 202.1, which suspended certain provisions of New York State Open Meetings law. The meeting is being video recorded and is also being broadcast live on the town of Pennfield's website, www.pennfield.org, and on the Town of Pennfield's government access channel 1303. The meeting will also later be transcribed. If you'd like to address the board on any public hearing matter, there will be specific public participation opportunities for each application after the board responds to the applicant's presentation with the board's questions and concerns. How can you participate? Well, you can do so by calling 340-8771, and when it's your turn, you'll be notified. Or you can also submit a comment electronically via the town's website, www.pennfield.org. Tonight's meeting is going to have two parts, but we will run right through. I don't think there's a need for a break tonight unless someone tells me they need a break. But we'll start first with our work session. We'll take care of any unfinished business from the last meeting, and then routine matters such as meeting minutes, and go over tonight's application in case we have any questions for clarification purposes. Once that work session is done, we'll launch into the public hearings, and we'll announce the application. We'll ask the applicant to give a presentation to the board and explain to the board why the relief requested should be granted. Once the application is done with the presentation, excuse me, the applicant is done with the presentation, the board will have some questions, and then, as I said earlier, we'll open it up to any speaker that cares to comment on the application. We'll ask everyone that gives a comment, including the applicant, to give us a name and address for the record, just so it's clear who's talking, again, for the record. The town does a really good job, we think, of notifying its citizens that applications are going to be heard, and the town does that so people know that they can come in and speak about these things if they like, or they could submit emails, or make phone calls, comment any way that they're comfortable doing that. And the town does this in several ways. It posts the agenda. It requires applicants to put up signs. We've all seen them, like, look like for sale signs, but they mention that the property's under review, and here's a number to call if you have any questions. The town also notifies people that own property within a certain number of feet of the property under review. They do that via postcards. We think it's a good system. It works well. We certainly welcome everybody's comments. Helps us do our job as well. So with that being said, I'd ask everybody to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Okay. Let's go to the agenda, and we just did the call to order, so we have minutes to approve. We've had them. Christine did her usual great job of getting them to us in plenty of time. Everyone's reviewed them. Do we have any comments, or if not, may I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Okay. Motion by Andres.
Second.
Second by Mike. So, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And any abstentions? Okay, unanimous. Okay, let's go to tonight's applications. The first one, the Pennfield Road, which is the pet store, a pretty clear application. Anybody have any questions about that? No?
No.
Second application, Crown Point Drive. That's the application for the variance for the swimming pool. Anybody have any questions for clarification purposes on that one? No?
No.
Okay. I think we are -- that was a quick work session. Efficient as always. Mike, way to go.
Thanks, Andy. Glad to do the help.
All right. So we will launch into the public hearings, and so may we have the first application, please, Andy?
Sure. Laura Baranis, Premier Sign Systems LLC, 10 Excel Drive, Rochester, New York, 14621. On behalf of Pet Supplies Plus requests a special permit under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow a larger building-mounted sign than permitted under Section 250-10.13-B of the code at 2157 Pennfield Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Wegmans Food Markets Incorporated and is owned general business, SBL number 139.02-1-2.3. This is application number 21Z-0001.
We have the applicant here. If you can give us your name and address, and then go right ahead into the presentation.
Okay. Laura Baranis, Premier Sign Systems, 10 Excel Drive, Rochester, New York, 14621.
Great.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Hello.
I am asking about adding grooming dog wash to the existing Pet Supplies Plus sign. The reason that they're asking is, when they first went in there, they didn't do grooming and dog wash. They now do it, and it's become a very important part of their business. They do it at a lot of their other locations, but they didn't ever really do it at this location. So now that they are, they're really looking to add it to the front sign so that everybody in the community knows that they do the grooming and the dog wash. It's very important to them to have that up there so that people do know that they have this grooming and dog wash available to them.
The additional letters that you want to add, the green and dog wash, is that going to be the same materials and the same lighting as the existing sign?
Correct.
Okay. Which I think is, what, white during the day and green at night?
White, I believe.
Sorry. This is Amanda Hufford. I'm with Pet Supplies Plus, sorry. I'm in Livonia, Michigan. Yes, that night, it does illuminate green.
And also, my understanding is, if we were to grant this, you'd be moving the Pet Supplies Plus sign down to the left, facing the building from its existing location, to try to center it a little bit more in the space?
Correct.
The question I had, I guess, is, have you thought of alternate ways of advertising that you're doing this now?
She gave it.
Typically, we don't see the description of services on the building-mounted sign. We see the, you know, the name of the building, because the essence of it is to identify the business.
Well, I think part of the reason that they want to put the sign on is because they just don't want people to think they're just a pet supply store. They want people to know that they can bring their dogs there for grooming and washing.
I guess my question is, aren't there other ways of doing that, such as putting signs on the inside and the windows, sending out mailers, other than to put it as part of your identification sign at the top of the building?
Well, I don't think that people are going to really know that, because they've never -- they weren't before grooming and dog wash, and now they are. So it's important for people to know that that's another part of their business, a service that they offer to their customers.
Do you have any other signs in the area that have similar types of descriptions of services in addition to the name of the business?
I'm not sure about that.
We do have other signs in New York, but I'll be honest, I'm from Michigan, so I don't, I'm not familiar with what is close by. Lake Ronkonkoma, we have multiple signs on the building expressing the dog wash, the grooming. We're getting one put up in Fishkill. I'm not sure how close these areas are to you guys. This has been turned into kind of a standard for us as Pet Supplies Plus, because it differentiates us between us and our competitors, to show that we do offer these services. When you're walking up, you can say, oh, I can go here and get my dog washed, or get him groomed. So it does definitely help with our business plan.
Have you considered whether you can reduce the size of the lettering on your existing sign plus this to get it more into compliance?
Well, we wouldn't want to reduce the size of the existing sign. We could reduce the letters a little bit on the grooming and dog wash and get rid of the bar in between them. But those letters have been there for a while, and they are expensive. It would be quite an expense to the owners to remove those signs and replace them with a smaller letter.
Well, some things we're supposed to be working on.
Mike, you're muted.
I'm muted?
No.
Not now?
No, you're good.
Good now.
Okay. So what I was saying was that you're asking for about a third larger than is required by code for a function that doesn't really address adequately identifying the business, which is where it's located. So I know it'd be expensive, but there's a lot of signage there already.
Well, what if we were to remove that line in between the letters, move grooming over, grooming and dog wash over, and then make those letters a little bit smaller?
Let me interrupt for a second here. Andy, is that, what is the effect of that bar being there? Does that increase the overall measurement that we're talking about here? I just wonder what would be the effect of what she's proposing?
Well, removing the bar in and of itself won't do anything, because the sign area is measured by the outer limits of the sign.
Letters.
With the letters, right?
So the bar doesn't enter the equation now?
If they move the Pet Supplies Plus and the grooming dog wash closer together, that would reduce it a little bit.
Oh.
Right.
Well, there you go.
That's what I was saying. If we removed the bar, it would allow us to move the letters over closer, and we could do, if we did a smaller letter and got rid of the bar, we could actually bring the square footage of this down. Give you a line.
Mike, I was just noticing on the Plaza, the Pet Supplies Plus at 331 and 250 in Fairport, it actually has grooming, self-serve dog wash underneath it as well.
Is it under it or next to it?
It's under it.
That was, that was one thing I was going to say, is if you put the letters across underneath.
Right.
I think the square footage would probably drop dramatically, because you don't have to extend as far across. You're just going down, let's say, whatever height those letters, they were, 15 inches. That would probably change.
Are you guys hearing that, the discussion here amongst board members? Maybe putting dog?
Yes.
Is that possible, to put dog, whatever the words are, dog grooming, dog washing?
Dog washing, grooming.
Below? Can you do it below the name of the store?
The landlord is requiring us to stay in line with the existing. So we did actually initially propose it to be underneath.
Yeah.
But that was denied by the landlord.
Who's the landlord there?
Wegmans.
Wegmans?
Yes.
But this is a Wegmans Plaza as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Interesting.
Yeah.
And that would be, even if you moved the Pet Supplies Plus portion up a little bit and try to center it, you know, on the height?
Well, if we move it, get rid of that line and move it over and do 15-inch letters, it brings it down to 139 square foot total.
And what's allowed?
110 square feet.
Okay.
So we'd only be 29 square foot over what's allowed right now.
Mike, do you mind if I pop in a little bit here?
No, not at all.
All right. You know, listening to your questions, it raised some questions in my mind, and really as much for Andy and other board members, and maybe the applicant, but I just, in thinking of this idea about advertising services, do we have that at Delta Sonic? Do we have it at Wegmans when they list pharmacy? I mean, is, you know, it's a...
Food pharmacy.
You know? So I get what you're saying, Mike, but I'm wondering if at Delta, don't we have something similar to that?
I think they have.
Like lubrication shop?
Lubrication, oil change, something like that. I feel like they have out there as well.
Yeah. I mean, it's not, it's not a separate business, and it is sort of, so...
But that's identifying areas of the store.
Yeah. I got you. So it's sort of a middle, it's not the store, it is a service, but physically, it, yeah, okay. And you may, I don't know if you guys had answered this or not, but I think, I think Mike asked it, and maybe I just missed the answer. What other methods will you be using to get the word out that you're going to provide this service in addition to the sign?
So we do send out flyers, and our flyers do advertise for the locations. Of course, it's available online, what location has what, but this has been kind of just what we've been doing over the last few years, since we've started remodeling and adding these services.
Okay.
And this is what their signs look like at their other locations, but when they originally set the store up, at that point, they didn't do grooming and dog wash, but now they do.
No, I understand.
So it's a very, you know, important part of their services.
Yeah. You've, I think you made that point. I think we're clear on that. Got anything else, Mike?
I do not, and I have no other questions.
All right. Before any more questions from the board, I, of course, I forgot to remind folks that, and I've been reminded that I forgot, I will let everybody know, to remind the public that they can call in with comments at 340-8771, or use the website, www.pennfield.org, to submit a comment. Right now, I don't see anybody that submitted anything through the website, nor do I believe anybody's on call. Do we have any more questions from the board?
Not at this time.
Figures.
He has his last name and address.
Okay. Amanda, can we have you re, give us your last name again and your address? We missed it.
Sorry. It's Hufford, which is H-U-F-F, like Frank, E-R-D, and the address is 17197 Laurel Park Drive, Livonia, Michigan.
You know, we have a Livonia probably about, what, 40 minutes from here? How about that? Small world, huh?
It's a different, this is different.
Oh, I know. I know. Okay. Well, I've stalled long enough to say that we don't have any phone calls, nor do we have any electronic comments through the website. So if we don't have any further questions, I think we can end the public hearing and move right into the deliberation, starting with Seeker.
Yeah. With regard to Seeker, I'm going to make a motion that this be declared an unlisted action and issue a negative declaration, no adverse environmental impacts.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion under Seeker made by Mike to declare it an unlisted action and further to issue a negative declaration. We have a second on that motion by Marie. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Go ahead, Mike.
On the main motion, I mean, this is a little bit larger than I'd like to see, and I'm not sure it totally satisfies the adequately identifying the business, but I think the additional lettering is not a significant addition as compared to the main sign itself. And if they agreed to remove the bar and move that lettering over to where that bar is, on that basis, I'd be willing to approve this.
Okay. I second that. So just to make sure the applicant was able to hear and understand that, there's a motion to approve this, excuse me, application provided that you move the letterings closer together and you reduce the size of the letters saying grooming and dog wash, as you offered to do during your presentation.
Okay.
Everyone, everyone in agreement on what I just said?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then, Mike's motion to approve, I've seconded it. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. No abstentions. Okay. Unanimous. All right, folks, good luck.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Andy, you want me to send you revised drawings tomorrow?
Yes, if you would.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you. Stay warm.
And safe.
Oh, yeah. Second application.
Peter Rosella, 14 Crown Point Drive, Pennfield, New York, 14526, requests an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an in-ground swimming pool with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 14 Crown Point Drive. The property is currently or formerly owned by Peter and Lauren Rosella and is owned R-1-20, SBL number 094.18-1-14. This is application number 21Z-0002.
All right. Thanks, Andy. And I see the applicant, so if you can, again, give us name and address and go proceed with your application, please.
Sure. My name's Peter Rosella. I live at 14 Crown Point Drive, Pennfield, New York, 14526. Basically, we live out of corner lots, and can I share my screen?
Sure.
Sure. Give me a second.
Sure.
Did that work? Okay.
I think we see it down here.
Yep. Yep. It's being broadcast.
Yeah. I don't think you're going to be able to see it up there.
Yeah.
All right. I think we're good.
Okay. Excellent. So we live on a corner lot, and the setback right now is 40 feet, and we'd like to extend beyond the required setback by 12 feet. The reason why we want to do this is, we have a lot of pre-existing landscape and hardscape in our backyard. We've been in the home about 10 years. The pre-existing stuff has been in there probably about nine, nine years, 10 years. Nearly a thousandth of a feet of patio and walkway space we have in our backyard. There's a lot of mature trees. This is going to impact a lot of the, a lot of the pre-planted stuff. In talking to both the contractor for the pool and contractor for the surrounding patio space, if we stay within the required setback, it's going to require a significant regrading of the backyard area, and I want to be honest, I want to save some money doing this as well. So this is just the current setup of what we have. It's hard to see from the pictures, but there's a significant slope heading this way, and a significant slope going down heading this way as well. And this was all done by Thomas Landscape. I pay for them every year to come and professionally maintain it in the spring and then the fall. This is just a diagram of the pool that we're planning on putting in. Northeastern pool is going to be, putting the pool in. The only thing that's not on this diagram, because they didn't have one at the time, was a, we're having a spill-over spa that's going to also be attached to the pool over on this end. It's going to be an eight-foot diameter spill-over spa. So just to give you an idea, so this is just an aerial of the property. There's where the setback line is, and the pool would be in here, and would require regrading of that entire shaded area, and we'd lose that pine tree, and we'd have to lose that pine tree. And like I said, those pine trees are about 15 feet each. If we go beyond the setback line by about 12 feet, and only a portion of the pool would be over, obviously, we, you know, our setback would be 28 feet instead of 40 feet. I'll go back to that, sorry. Sorry about that. We'd end up being able to keep these pine trees here, and there'd be a lot less regrading. There's a big shade tree here as well that's probably about 10 feet tall, and we'd be able to keep a lot of that in place. So here's the tape map, and this is what we're talking about doing. About, this can be about 20 feet from the house, and again, the setback would be 28 feet. And it's just a rough sketch of how we might incorporate the pool into, into the existing landscape. Again, Thomas Landscape and Design will be doing all the landscape work around the pool. And they have a letter in support saying how this will significantly impact what's existing there and add into the cost. As far as the rest of the neighborhood goes, I don't think this is going to significantly impact the look or the field of the neighborhood. This is the area where the pool's going to be. It's going to be far from this neighbor, the neighbors across the street. When you're in their yard, looking into my yard, my row of pine trees here are going to give us some privacy, and our row of pine trees back here give us some privacy from this yard. Around the fence line, on the outside of the fence line, they do plan on putting some extra plants to provide some more privacy as well.
I'm sorry, but I'm having a tough time seeing that, and that was very, I was very interested in, in, see, can you blow that up anymore than?
Yeah. Let me see what I can do.
Yeah. And by the way.
Okay.
This is a compliment, but it's kind of ironic to hear that you're concerned about spending money on that property. It's incredible property.
Oh, thank you.
Could you zoom in from your right monitor to your left monitor or beyond the projector?
I'm sorry?
I don't know who made that suggestion to him, but could you say it again?
Andy, it's Andy.
No, it's for Andy.
Oh.
Yeah, I think I can figure out how to do that.
So here's, here's what we're talking about.
Full screen, drag it to your left, and then go back full screen.
There it is. Nice.
Way to go, Andy.
Okay. Is that good?
Spoke too soon. There we go.
Yes.
All right. If you could just kind of reiterate that last point you were making. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. So, you know, putting the pool about 12 feet over the setback, I don't think it's going to negatively impact the look and the field of the neighborhood. As you can see, there are pools in the area. If you go off this way, there's several more pools back here, which I don't have pictures of. But, and it's all going to be protected by landscape and things, so, you know, the look and feel will be there. As far as, you know, detriment to my neighbors, it's going to be on the opposite side of these neighbors, so, you know, this provides a lot of privacy, and they really can't see into our backyard too well. And across the street, this neighbor, when they're sitting in their backyard, you really, with the row of pine trees here and some other plants that we have, you really can't see into that space either. And same with these neighbors back here. There's a pretty big trench right here that really, when you're looking down here, and they have really no windows here that can look into our property. And outside the fence line for the pool, I plan on putting a lot of plants and stuff to further give us, this is all around the pool.
All right. So if you could, you've probably already done this, but if I'm on that street and I'm, and I'm walking my dog, let's say, and I turn to my right and I'm looking in your backyard, what am I, what am I going to see? Trees? And am I going to see a fence?
Yes. You'll see a fence. I'm planning on just having a standard wrought iron, black fence, and what I'm planning on doing is, along the fence line, offset to these pine trees and the spaces between these pine trees, but along the fence line, I'm going to have plants so that it further, so when you're walking down here and you look to the right, you won't see much through the bushes and the trees.
All right. And do we have, is it, Andy, is it 28 feet from the, the proposed edge of the pool, let's say, to the right of where, or is it to the asphalt?
Well, it's to the property line, which is represented by the black line on that. Well, it's to the property line, which is represented by the black line on that aerial.
Okay, so there's going to be even more green space, shall we say, between the property line and the asphalt?
Yes.
An idea how much? Another 10 feet?
Typically, it's about 18 feet typically.
Okay. So the reality is to somebody, again, I'll say, walking his dog, there's, there's going to be the 28 feet if this is approved, plus another 18 feet or so until you even get to the edge of the pool. And there's going to be trees in between it and a wrought iron fence. Okay.
So the only comment I have before you give out the phone number and website again is, I'm impressed you're very well-prepared and this is actually one of our better presentations from a, you know, that's, that's not a professional, you know, landscaper or, you know, whatever, but this is very well-prepared and detailed, so I appreciate that.
You know, I hate being reminded I forget stuff, you know, but it happens, it happens a lot at home too and work.
But look how subtly I did it.
Yeah, that was subtle. Okay, anybody in the public that has comments on this, feel free to call 340-8771 or submit an electronic comment on the town's website, penfield.org. I see no electronic comments, not surprisingly, and I don't, what, we do have one?
No, I just wanted to make a comment if I could while we were waiting.
Well, is it germane to the application?
It is.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring up to the applicant, I'm not sure where he's proposing to locate the fence, but we do have a requirement that a fence cannot exceed three feet in height within 20 feet of the property line. And you're, you're actually required to have a four-foot high fence for the pool barrier, so that would mean the fence would have to be at least 20 feet from the property line.
Okay.
Good point. So we might see you again.
You might see me again.
One, one final question that I have is, you know, you mentioned that you don't think there's any effect on, on your neighbors and I certainly understand that. Have you, have you discussed this application with any of your neighbors or has anybody asked you about it?
Nobody's asked me about it, except actually a neighbor across the street knows about it and their daughter wants to come swimming, so.
Okay. All right, once again, I don't see any electronic comments or phone calls. Any other questions from the board? No, Mike, you good?
I'm good, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, then we'll close the hearing and we'll get right into the deliberations. I will make a motion to declare this a type two action under Seeker and requiring no further action.
I'll second.
All right, I made that motion, Christine, and Andrus seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I will make, on the merits, I'll make a motion to approve the application. Obviously, very well-maintained and well-up, kept and very nice property. I have every reason to believe that, you know, you're welcome, that this is going to add to that. We did have an application last month that was similar in the sense that while a variance is being requested, it's really only a portion of the item being built that's going to encroach. And here, I didn't, you know, looking from the maps that we saw, it, I don't know, it seemed like about a third of the pool maybe, so it's not the entire pool is my point that's going to be in violation. So that goes to the issue of whether this is a significant variance request, and maybe it is, but it's less significant when you consider that particular aspect. Certainly, it's self-created. There are other pools in the neighborhood, so the existence of a pool's not going to have any effect. They're sufficient and nice-looking buffering. So for, I don't, I don't see any adverse effect on, on the neighborhood at all, just, perhaps just the opposite. So that's my motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, and we have a second from Andrus. Any further discussion?
I'd say I think I'd also point out that, you know, the applicant looked at alternatives, but I think those alternatives require substantial regrading, which would probably affect drainage and things like that in a negative way as well, possibly.
Excellent point.
And then also, do we want to add that the fence might need to be, you might need to seek a variance for the fence, given that it's near, on a corner lot?
Right. That no fence will be constructed without proper authorization.
Great.
Sounds good.
Okay, then we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Nope, okay, unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm pretty sure that was the last application for tonight. Any other business? No, okay, well, hearings are adjourned and once again, outstanding job by the crew here at the town getting this meeting going. Went off again without a hitch. We're going to have to learn all over again how to do this in person once this ends, but great job. See you everybody next month. Thank you very much.
Good night.